All right, hello and welcome to the Monday, February 13th, 2023 Hillsborough Township Board of Education meeting. In accordance with the State's Sunshine Law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on February 9th, 2023 to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. Mr. Eric, can we take role?
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Ms. Jackson?
Here.
Mr. Kidd?
Here.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Here.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Nurse?
Here.
Ms. Stats?
Here.
Mr. Heo?
Here.
And Mr. Mariney?
Here.
We have a quorum. Let now make a motion to move into executive session. Whereas the Open Publics Meeting Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provide that a public body may exclude the public from a portion of that meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required, as permitted in Section 7B of the act resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough and the County of Somerset in the state of New Jersey as follows. The matters to be discussed are personnel matters and a legal matter. Matters discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll be back around 7:30. Thank you. Hello and welcome back to the Monday, February 13th, 2023 Hillsborough Township Board of Education meeting. Mr. Eckert, if we could take role?
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Ms. Jackson?
Here.
Mr. Kidd?
Here.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Here.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Nurse?
Here.
Ms. Stats?
Here.
Mr. Heo?
Here.
And Mr. Mariney?
Here.
We have a quorum. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, I'd like to acknowledge the correspondence as listed. We didn't have any committee meetings this week, so we don't have any committee reports to report out on. Board President's Report. I don't think we have anything for this week. I had something. I'm gonna look at my notes. We'll move forward to the Superintendent's Report, then I'll add mine at the end.
Sure. Thank you so much, Mr. President. I just wanted to say it has really been a pleasure for the first three weeks that I've been here as superintendent. This past week in particular was a fun one as I was able to get out into the community and interact with several staff members as well as general members of the community, too. This week I was able to attend a wrestling match where our wrestling team beat East Brunswick 72 to nothing in the state playoffs, and that is difficult to do before eventually losing to Howell. It was great interacting with some parents there. I then went to Hillsborough Elementary School on Wednesday night for their Home and School Association meeting, and it was a bit of a homecoming for me as I used to be principal at Hillsborough Elementary School, and it was great getting to interact with some parents there. Then yesterday, I was able to come over to the municipal building where our baseball team was hosting a fundraiser or a pancake breakfast, and the students and athletes were actually there doing the serving, and I got a chance to interact with a lot of parents there as well. Unfortunately, I did not win anything at the basket auction or the 50/50 that my wife bought tickets for, and I even told her, I said, "Stacy, if we win the 50/50, you have to give all the money back." So it was just a little extra donation on our end. And today also marks our 100th day of school. Our elementary schools participated in many activities that included dressing up as 100-year-olds, and I saw that at both sunny meet in Hillsborough Elementary today, collections for the Hillsborough Food Bank, and $1 donations for our local seniors. The day is always fun and reminds us that spring is just around the corner. I also want to take a moment. I am pleased to introduce Ms. Christina Smith. Ms. Smith, are you here? Yes. Special education teacher from Amsterdam Elementary School, who also serves as the HEA Second Vice President and a Pride Chairperson. Ms. Smith is here this evening to announce the winner of the "Wherever Life Takes You, Go With All of Your Heart" postcard contest. And welcome, Ms. Smith, as I'll put the postcards up here.
Thank you, Mr. Volby. First, I want to thank everybody who participated, Superintendent, Sister and Superintendent, Board members, and community members for helping judge. I'm excited to announce the winners. This postcard that... You can do anyone, it's fine. This postcard you see here is from a student from Aris. His name is Preston Bayless. He's one of the winners. This postcard here is from the middle school, and her name is Noor Fatima. And this design is from a winner from the high school, Kelsey Leckenbauer. All three designs are going to be made into postcards that are going to be sent to seniors around Somerset County. If you can go back to the one with the butterflies, please. I know it's a little blurry, but this one is actually chosen as the grand prize winner, and it will be made into a postcard, a billboard on Route 206 that will be on display. So congratulations to all the winners. Thank you.
Congratulations to all the winners, and I'm glad I'll see something I like on Route 206, you know, that's out there. I'm sure we all will. Thank you, Ms. Smith, for your efforts with this. I also want everyone to please help us spread the word that kindergarten registration is now open for September of 2023. Parents may start the pre-registration by visiting the district website. During pre-registration, parents will have the opportunity to request information on our Children at Play, which is known as our CAP program. The CAP program is a play-based program for the district that provides families with the opportunity for their child to remain in school for a full day. Tuition for the 23-24 school year is $660 per month. And I know I'm going to be introducing Dr. Feltry, but, Mr. President, did you remember what you had?
I did.
Okay, go ahead. We'll go to you first.
Just two items. We are planning on doing the ethics training, I think, next meeting. I know there were some questions asked, and we have reached out to Dr. Mandelbaum talking about healthy school start hours as well as any other topics he may want to discuss, and we're not going to do those in the same meeting, so probably early next month if we can, we'll have him attend a meeting.
Thank you. And now at this time, Dr. Feltry is going to be reporting out on our Start Strong information from this fall.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Volby. The Start Strong assessments were administered in September of 2022 and tested students in English Language Arts, Math, and Science. Get the system down. The Start Strong assessments produced information to be used as a standards-based complement to the resources used by educators in their classrooms to evaluate the needs of students. They were short assessments designed to provide immediate results to inform pacing, planning, and instruction. The results of the Start Strong assessments are being used in conjunction with local assessments to inform the support of student learning throughout the year. The Start Strong assessments do not replace the local assessments, the benchmark assessments that we already have in place. They also do not replace the 2023 NJ SLA testing, and they are not predictive of student performance on the upcoming NJ SLAs. The Start Strong assessments are based on a subset of the prior year academic standards to provide an indication of the level of support that a student may need to understand the current grade level content. For example, the Grade 5 ELA Start Strong assessment is aligned to a subset of the Grade 4 ELA standards, and that chart shows you the whole alignment. Test questions. And the test was designed to allow for a shortened testing time, 45 to 60 minutes, and allowed for immediate results once testing was concluded. So that meant that the Start Strong results have to... We have to be careful in how we interpret and use the results. They need to be interpreted and used differently than the NJ SLA results, which are much more comprehensive and occur at the end of the year. The Start Strong assessments do not cover the breadth and depth of the standards seen on the NJ SLA, and they do not support the same comparisons or inferences about student proficiency. They're really used to help guide how we're going to support the students in understanding the content this year. Since some students across the state take Algebra I and Geometry in middle school, for the Algebra and Geometry assessments, the Start Strong assessment is aligned to the Grade 8 learning standards relevant to either Algebra I or Geometry. Since the science assessment is grade-banded, the students were assessed on standards for multiple prior years, and those are shown here. The Start Strong assessments are assessments designed to inform instruction by gauging students' current understanding of the learning standards that should have been previously taught and previously learned. As such, they are used to inform pacing adjustments to the curriculum, differentiation, intervention, and targeted support is warranted. The results are used by classroom teachers to provide support in just-in-time learning of prior year standards to support the mastery of the content this year. Please note that the Start Strong assessments were not designed to predict future student performance on the NJ SLA. And I think that's it for the slide. This table displays the number and percent of students in each support level for each of the grade levels administered the Start Strong English Language Arts Assessment, which were 4 through 10. All of the ELA items were two-part, evidence-based, selected response items. This type of item typically combines a traditional multiple-choice item in the first part and a multiple-choice or multi-select item in the second part. The student provides evidence in the second part to support their answer to the first part. The Start Strong assessment in ELA only assessed reading, didn't assess writing. So assessing reading, information, and reading literature. Each form contains one literature passage and one informational passage. For each passage, students read the passage and then answered the related items. Please note that on the filing tables, the percentages may not add up to 100 due to rounding. It's not a mathematical error. This table displays the number and percent of students in each support level for each of the grade levels or math courses administered the Start Strong Mathematics Assessment. For math, the items included multiple-choice, multi-select, and technology-enhanced items. The Start Strong assessment for Algebra I contains more items from the Grade 8 learning standards relevant to algebraic concepts, and the Start Strong assessment for Geometry contains more items from the Grade 8 learning standards relevant to geometry concepts. The Start Strong assessment for Algebra II is based on Algebra I learning standards. Since approximately 30,000 New Jersey students in Grade 8 participated in the Algebra I assessment, the Math 8 outcomes are not representative of Grade 8 performance as a whole. This table displays the number and percent of students in each support level for each of the grade levels administered the Start Strong Science Assessment, 6, 9, and 12. Like math, for science, the items included multiple-choice, multi-select, and technology-enhanced items. The Start Strong Science Assessment was administered to students in Grades 6, 9, and 12 and assessed standards taught over several of the prior years. This table and graph display the percentage of students in each support level for English Language Arts Start Strong Assessment by race. Less support is indicated by green, some support is indicated by yellow, and more support is indicated in red. This table and graph display the percent of students in each support level for the Mathematics Start Strong Assessment by race. This table and graph display the percent of students in each support level for the Science Start Strong Assessment by race. This table and graph display the percent of students in each support level for the English Language Arts Start Strong Assessment by program. This table and graph display the percent of students in each support level for the Mathematics Start Strong Assessment by program. This table and graph display the percent of students in each support level for the Science Start Strong Assessment by program. Supervisors and teachers are using the results of the Start Strong assessments to inform their instruction and to provide appropriate ongoing support of students' learning throughout the year. Additionally, the Start Strong results are being used in conjunction with the benchmark assessments to provide targeted instruction for learning acceleration. That concludes the report.
Thank you, Dr. Feltry. Does anybody have any specific questions about Start Strong for Dr. Feltry before I conclude my report?
Yeah, I do. To oversimplify what Start Strong is showing us at the beginning of the school year, are students who need help with materials they learned last year.
Correct.
To see how they're starting off. So does that... Students that are in the "needs more help" category, what kind of more help do they get?
So it'll be targeted when that standard is being taught. So what we're not seeing here is there's additional information that's provided to the teachers regarding exactly what they understood and what they didn't understood. So it could be a game that they play before they learn the new content and kind of refresh them. It could be a targeted lesson. We provide Response to Intervention Services. They could be pulled out for additional Response to Intervention Services. It really depends on the individual student.
Right. Thank you.
And where that need lies.
Thank you for the question, and thank you for the presentation, Dr. Feltry. And, Mr. President, that concludes my Superintendent's Report.
All right, thank you very much. Let now move on to the approval of minutes. 9.1, Motion to Approve Executive Session Minutes 123 to 23, and Motion to Approve Public Minutes 123 to 23. Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion by the board?
Albeit abstaining.
Thank you. All right. Otherwise, I think all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Comments from the public board. This will be the public input on the action agenda and 2023-2024 budget. We very much welcome input from the public during the board meetings. There will be 2-30 minute periods of time that the meeting will be open to public comment where members of the public are invited to comment, which they may do if they're attending in person. During the first public comment period, members of the public may comment about items that are listed on tonight's agenda before the board votes. During the second public comment period, members of the public may comment on any school or school district issue. If a member of the public feels maybe concerned, the residents of the school district has provided a 0167. Before you state your comment, you will be asked to provide your name and address. There's a 3-minute limit on public comment. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question-answer sessions. Rather offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instance, where the board pleases there's a misunderstanding or an accuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when members of the public may make a comment or ask a question about personnel or hiring decisions. Kindly note that the Open Public Meetings Act and the privacy rights of public employees encompass therein do not permit the board to discuss personal issues in public session. If you have any comments, please identify that's a budget topic or what action item agenda that you will be speaking towards.
Good evening. Good evening. Stefania Lockwood, Middle Stone River Road. Just a brief comment on 12.1. This is regarding substitute teacher rate of pay. I was really excited when I saw this because I believed that this was a change in V rate of pay, but it is a change to A rate of pay, which, from the little bit I learned in economics in college as a engineering major, usually you pay more money when there is a greater demand for something or to get something better. So what this is saying to me is that the district has recognized that we're not paying our substitutes nearly enough to get people who are qualified, and therefore, we're paying this particular individual, which I do not begrudge them at all for negotiating well. Congratulations to them. We're paying them more because their expertise, their need, whatever it is that's being met, is clearly more valuable. And I just think it's not... I don't think it's appropriate for us to be paying people... Paying other substitutes less because they're not worth as much. Like, it's just... It sends a really conflicting message about the value of substitute teachers, and that's already something that the district is not great with in terms of compensation. So just disappointing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening. Good evening. Henry Goodhue, Hillsborough Education Association. So just two points on the action agenda I wanted to touch on. The first being 12.13, which is the resolution to rejoin CJ Pride. I commend the district for doing that. Look forward to that passing and to us exploring bringing in more...
Can I pause for one second? Can you raise the volume a little bit?
Yeah, sure.
Trouble here.
I get my 2 minutes back now, so...
I paused your time.
Reclaiming my time. So, of course, when I'm saying nice things, my time goes back, right? So my first point was to 12.13, which is the resolution for CJ Pride. I commend the district for re-entering that program. I think that's a valuable program, and hopefully, we can start seeing greater volume of candidates, more diverse candidates, and candidates who are reflective of our student population. So I really think that that is a great move, and I do commend the district for that. But I do also have concerns about 12.1, if I'm going to be honest. I don't necessarily have concerns or begrudge doing it. I actually think I understand the reason for it. We're in the midst of a shortage. These are hard positions to fill. That being said, I think when we look at this in the context of a daily substitute versus a long-term substitute versus a staff member, and we start making distinctions between what are the differences that are recognized in pay in those positions, well, it comes down to having a certificate where you're working. And for a daily substitute, they're not necessarily going to have that. And I think that the parents, the students, certainly from the association's perspective, we want as many people in the classrooms who are going to have the appropriate certificates as possible to be where they're supposed to be. But I do recognize we're in the midst of a shortage, and we're doing the best we can. Again, though, that being said, we're looking at a difference of $15 between the position that the board is possibly creating tonight and our long-term substitutes. So that's a difference of $15 for a certificate for content area, a difference of $15 for writing lesson plans, a difference of $15 for answering student emails, parent emails, a difference of $15 for attending back-to-school night, $15 for conferences. That's a pretty negligible amount. So I do think that while this is being done with the best of intents, that we are possibly de-incentivizing people from becoming long-term substitutes and exacerbating a problem where we have a much larger one. So I do want to raise that concern and put that out for consideration. So thank you.
Thank you. So I think we'll just pause real quick. If you want to speak to that.
Sure. I can speak to a couple of things that were just said there, just to clarify. As far as the raising of the substitute rate, Mr. Goodhue, I don't disagree with what you're saying about some of our leave replacements and how they may be feeling with those, with the remuneration being close. I understand that. But to clarify for anybody about raising the substitute rate, we are in a teacher crisis and shortage. There's no other way to put that. And one of the reasons why we're also joining CJ Pride and helping out, as I said, on the Executive Board of CJ Pride, and hopefully, that can help us bring more candidates in here in general. The reason why an individual rate is being raised is not for a person who is just coming in and executing the plans that a teacher has left and then not being involved in the grading and leaving that behind for the teacher. That is what we know as our typical substitute process. There are some times that we have a substitute coming in for a true vacancy. We don't have a teacher, and we're searching for one. And in that case, we're lucky enough that we can have somebody step in, and they will be responsible for doing some things like grading some papers and actually planning the lessons. So that's the reason why we have this one-off for these situations, that we do want to make sure that we keep these people who may be doing a little bit more work than just a typical per diem sub, and we appreciate everything they do, but they are usually not involved in planning the lessons as well as grading them. But to the points that are made, could this have, you know, on appearances, some issues? It could, but I think it is the best solution right now for our students, keeping our schools staffed, as well as trying to develop the next generation of teachers, some of them who are substitutes. We're trying to get those certificates to bring them into either leave replacement positions or tenure-track positions, and I'm sorry if I spoke too long about that.
Time's up.
Okay. 3 minutes.
All right, we will continue public comment.
Hello, I'm Krish from HHS's FRC Team 75, the RoboRaiders. Since December, we have hosted many engaging events. Our biggest event was Kickoff on January 7th, which was very successful. During the event, we learned what the new game was. This year, our robot has to strategically pick up cones and inflatable cubes and place them on different platforms in order to receive points. Hosted at the high school, Team 75 worked in groups to brainstorm ideas for the team's tactical approach, and we had several guest speakers, including Principal DeLolo, Dr. Feltry, Committee Man John Chichirelli, Assemblyman Roy Freeman, and Donald Bowers, who facilitated the start of the team back in 1996. Our STEM Library Initiative, which hosts STEM-related events on the second Tuesday of every month for ARIS students, has also been going well. Since our district does not currently have a robotics program out on Road, we decided to focus on hands-on activities for this age group, and it's been proven successful. Our events are booked within minutes as we max out around 50 students every single time. One of our most recent STEM library events was Anatomy of Pokemon. Through this activity, the students could not only learn about animal adaptations, but were also able to use their imagination and teamwork to create a one-of-a-kind Pokemon. Another STEM library event we hosted was Lego Spike Kits and FIRST Robotics. Kids were able to explore engineering concepts and electrical circuits with fun, hands-on activities. Families of students were then introduced to the FIRST Tech Challenge and Lego League programs. Through this event, we were able to expose hundreds of viewers to the many STEM and FIRST opportunities that are available in the Hillsborough Township Public Schools District. Speaking of STEM events, Team 75 members volunteered and helped to run activities at the annual ARIS STEM Summit two weekends ago. We did a robot demo in this very room. On top of all of that, on January 25th, our team leaders presented at the Atlantic City's TechSpa Conference to New Jersey superintendents about the value of the FIRST Robotics program. A few educators even expressed interest in visiting our FLL teams and starting their own in their own district. We also connected with more than 35 exhibiting companies and vendors about supporting and partnering with us. Overall, it's been a great start to our build season. With your support, we've been able to extend our outreach programs within our community, with hopes to continue this great progress in the future. Thank you for your time, and have a good evening.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Sevath Montgomery, and this is my first time being in one of these meetings. I feel like I had to come and be an advocate for my daughter. I know that it's very difficult in teaching now. I'm a nurse, been a nurse for 35 years. There's never enough teachers, there's never enough nurses, you know? But I believe as the town is getting bigger and people are coming in, and of course, we cannot select who comes in and who comes out. The problem that I'm having is there's kids being bullied. I feel that unfortunately, there needs to be more, I guess, people watching the kids in areas that there's no cameras. And like I say, I have no problems with education. Use Rock. I have three older kids, graduated from Hillsborough High School, professionals working. But unfortunately, the town is changing, and I'm afraid for my daughter. She's a straight A student. She is a great athlete, and they're telling me I have to put her on medication because she's afraid of retaliation. Her friends, they're helping me. I was not aware because she did not want it to say anything because she thought that they were going to jump her. And I have a problem with that because now they put me on medication because I cannot do my job as a nurse, take care of somebody when my daughter's hurting. Like I said, I know everything is a budget, and but my first thing is my child. I don't want to lose my child. And I come here to please, for next year, do something because something's going to happen. Because we're getting people that... And I'm not judging anybody, but kids that are rough. And we can't do nothing because we're not the parents. As educators, some of these parents are taking them to school so you could be the parent, the mother, the father, the instructor, the teacher, the babysitter. You can't do that. Education starts home, but some of them don't understand that. But I have to be an advocate for my daughter. And I thank you. I think all of yous are wonderful. I think all of yous are wonderful, and I've been living here almost twenty years, and I moved here because of the school system. My kids did very well, and I, I think very highly of all of yous, especially with COVID. I'm telling you, yous rock, but I'm just afraid for my daughter. So please, if there's something, I don't know, maybe somebody, I would even, you know, what is it? Just, you know, just to sit there and just monitor, you know, on my days off, or if something could volunteer, I don't know. Because some of these girls, especially with the younger kids, fourteen and fifteen, seniors are targeting them, and they're not saying anything because they're afraid. So they're helping me. I have no problems with that. It's a shame that I did not know this two months ago, because a lot of things would not be what's happening now. And that is why I'm here. So yous could help me out, not only me, but the children, to save the town, because the thing is that people come here for the school system and family and all the events, you know, that yous have. But if we lose the school system, then what's the point? I will be the first one to move out. You know, and I'm just here, you know, to say that I know everything is budget and money, and I know, you know, after COVID, it's terrible, but if you could just, like, maybe put your heads together and maybe, I don't know. I don't know how to do your job because it's difficult, but if yous could just help not only me, but the other children that are quiet, that are sensitive, you know, and that are afraid to talk, because they're the one hurting, and they're the one that are getting hurt. Okay? Well, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no others, we will move on to the action agenda.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. In the area of education, I would ask the board's consideration to approve the following motions. Professional travel-related expenses to affirm the superintendent's HIV determination for the cases. Motion to approve overnight trips. Authorize the submission of the amended fiscal year twenty-three ESEA grant application. And that's it.
All right, can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Any discussion by the board on the action agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to roll. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning-Beater?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Ms. Trahio?
Yes.
And Mr. Murray.
Yes, motion passes.
In the area of human resources, I'd ask for the board's consideration to approve the following motions, the resolution mentioned about the substitute pay, retirements and resignations as listed, to approve a contract change, revised leaves of absence, leaves of absence, revised leave replacement assignments, appointments, there are several as listed, a mentor, sixth and seventh period coverages, extra coverages, group changes, the winter volleyball clinic, and the CJ Pride Shared Services Agreement.
Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion by the board? Ms. Nurse?
Yes, can you please do twelve point one separately?
Okay. All right, so we'll do, since we have a motion for the existing, we'll do twelve dot two through twelve dot thirteen, and we'll, any additional conversation on those items? No? Okay, so we'll take a roll on that. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning-Beater?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Ms. Trahio?
Yes.
And Mr. Murray.
Yes, motion passes. Now can I get a motion on twelve dot one?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on twelve dot one, or you just want that one parsed out? Ms. Nurse?
You know, I struggle with this, I'm just going to say that. I struggle because I understand all points of it, but I, the reason, the way that I'm voting this evening is because I just think that we could come together and just be a little bit more uniform about this in the future, because I think the way it's presented tonight, it might be case by case, and I'm not sure that we can do that moving forward, more so to have a plan for the in-between group of people that might be needing to be filled where there is not a certificate, but there is some expectation of planning and grading. So I just think that, you know, it's a possibility, but something that we need to just be more clear about as opposed to case by case.
Okay. Any other comments? Ms. Stats?
Following up on what Ms. Nurse said, I guess maybe we can look to try to maybe make a more formal kind of policy about this, but sometimes that happens at a glacial pace. But considering the urgency of the need here, I do support this resolution.
All right, seeing no other comments, we'll move to taking a roll on this. Twelve dot one. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning-Beater?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
With three like that, so you need to vote no.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Heel?
Yes.
And Mr. Murray.
Yes, motion passes.
In the area of operations, I would ask the board's consideration in approving the following motions, monthly financials, line item transfers, approval of financial status, non-public expenditure resolution, the coordinated transportation agreement with the resolution for Somerset County Educational Services Commission to approve the disposal and sale of obsolete equipment and to accept donations.
Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion by the board on this action agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to roll. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning-Beater?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Ms. Trahio?
Yes.
And Mr. Murray.
Yes, motion passes.
All right, we'll move on to the second public comment period. We very much welcome input from the public. During board meetings, there'll be two thirty-minute periods of time that the meeting will be open to public comment where members of the public are invited to comment, which they may do if they're attending in person. During the second public comment period, members of the public may comment on any school or school district issue that a member of the public feels may have concern or residence of the school district gets provided a zero-one-six-seven. Before you state your comment, you'll be asked to provide your name and address. There's a three-minute limit on public comment. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but rather offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In this instance, where the board believes there's a misunderstanding or an accuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel hiring decisions. Kindly note that the Open Public Meetings Act and the property rights of public employees encompass therein did not permit the board to discuss personal issues in public session.
Hi, Alicia Gabor-Bailas, Huff Lane in Hillsborough. I just wanted to give a big shout out to Kate Shaughnessy and Todd McDonald for their help with adjusting the Hillsborough happenings. I know that we don't have a communications person right now, and I don't know if we will get one, given our financial constraints, but I just wanted to give a big thanks to them. I also want to give a thanks to Todd McDonald for all of his work with the RoboRaiders and all of his help with bringing things to the younger grades, including Eris and middle school at least. I was going to also mention that the RoboRaiders were awesome. They came to the STEM Summit. They filled that, that space behind you on the stage. That's how many that we had. Yes, they did a presentation, but they also were in every single room helping out, and it was wonderful. I also was debating mentioning this in the first one, but I hope that, I saw that Anna Mahler on twelve point two is retiring at the end of the year, and I do hope that you replace her position as a SAC at the middle school. I also hope that you consider creating a SAC position at the, at Eris. Let's see, anything else? I think that's probably enough for me for now. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Henry Goodhue, Hillsborough Education Association. Motion passed, so I'm not going to belabor the point about twelve point one, but offer some clarification for the public and perhaps the board as well. If someone had a certificate, they'd be working as a long-term sub. If they had a certificate in the content area, to be specific, they would be a long-term sub. But again, that's now a differential of fifteen dollars with a lot more demands. And being involved in lesson plans is not writing lesson plans. So I do think that that's important to draw those distinctions for the public, and I also do want to just point out that the requirement, unless there's a distinction made for this position or other positions of this nature, of which I'm not aware, but the requirement as it stands right now to be a daily substitute or a daily substitute in this new capacity is sixty college credits. It's not sixty credits in education, it's not sixty credits in your content area, it's just sixty credits, SAGA Morpho screening, and a license from the state. So I do think that the district needs to be very cautious in the message that they may unintentionally be sending to current staff, who might be working in these positions with advanced degrees, possibly even long-term subs who are working in these positions with advanced degrees, because while we are, you know, the district may be trying to do something for the best of reasons, I do think that there will be some unintended consequence from this, and I just felt that I needed to put that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Stephania Lockwood, Millstone River Road. Content warning, bullying, murder. Sixteen-year-old Brianna Gay was brutally murdered this weekend in the UK. Brianna was a sixteen-year-old trans girl, allegedly killed by her classmates. Brianna had been bullied for years for the simple reason that she was transgender. I didn't want to be here and speaking publicly and not take a moment to say her name and to recognize and remember her. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All right, seeing no additional folks, we'll close public comment, and we'll move on to any board discussion, if there's any comments the board would like to have. Ms. Stats?
I just wanted to make everybody aware that this year's High School Musical will be Legally Blonde, and the performances will be February twenty-fourth through the twenty-sixth, as well as March fourth. And as usual, the talent that our students have is phenomenal, and it's, it'll be fun and funny, and the performances will be amazing. So I invite everybody to come.
Thank you, Ms. Stats. Anyone else? Ms. Nurse?
I would just like to thank the member of our community who came forward tonight and told the story of her daughter who was struggling and, as a parent, was struggling. And I hope that you have the support of the community, but just a reminder that we, in the schools, are here to help. So if you haven't already reached out to the principal, the assigned vice principal, and the counselor, please do that, because I'm sure this district would love to help any family that is struggling. So if you need contact information, please just stay and talk to one of us, and we'll make sure that you have that information. That's for anybody in our community who's struggling, either as a parent or with a student at home who is struggling.
Thank you, Ms. Nurse. Anyone else? So I'll just add one more comment. I know we had the homeschool student policy on the last meeting. We are going to be discussing any refinements or any changes potentially at the next committee meetings, start next week, and then, assuming all goes well, it'll be on the last meeting of this month for, for a vote. So I know that mysteriously wasn't on this week because we wanted to wait for another committee meeting to make final adjustments if necessary. We have been doing some great research. Our superintendent provides a lot of data for surrounding districts, so we'll have a very fruitful conversation in the upcoming committee meetings. All right, seeing that, I will take a motion to adjourn. Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.